Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 3rd, 2014 meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session in Public Hearing. We will have a public hearing on the budget for fiscal year 2014 and 15. And before we move forward, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes and we will move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Board members, I need a motion that the public hearing on the Cabarrus County Board of Education be open for public input.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing and it is my understanding that we do not have any public speakers. Is that correct, Ms. Monroe? Okay, well, seeing that we have no speakers, I'd like a, let me make sure I'm getting to the right spot. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on the Cabarrus County Schools Budget for Fiscal Year 2014-15.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We will move right on to Section 4 for our reports and we will ask Ms. Kelly Klutz to come to the podium.
Good afternoon. Let's see here, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just getting organized here a little bit.
You're still asleep.
You're still asleep, okay. So I'm gonna, gonna wake you up with this exciting budget presentation. So today, we're gonna do, this is our first budget presentation of four budget presentations. Prior to the budget presentations, we had four budget committee presentations. We've completed three of those presentations and one will happen on Thursday of this week and that'll wrap us up. And what happens there is that out of those meetings, our superintendent gathers information and data so that he can make a budget recommendation to the Board of Education. And so that is the, the goal for the end of these budget presentations is for him to make a budget recommendation to the Board of Education. So we'll review a lot of that tonight. So on, I'm gonna slip down to the next page. On page two, and that looks light to me, I apologize. So I'll read a lot of it to you. So today, we're gonna review the 2013-2014 budget. And the reason that's important is that we need, I need for you to have an understanding of where our money comes from. So as we talk about our regulations and the funding requirements behind the dollars that we're asking to spend, I'll need for you to know why we can't buy it from this pot or why we can buy it from another allocation of funding. So we'll review those, that budget. We'll also talk about our budget development process and our calendar so that you'll know what to expect. We're gonna talk about our capital outlay budget, so those are non-facilities items. And when I mean, when I'm talking about non-facilities, repairs and maintenance of our facilities and grounds are handled separately. So these are types of things like our transportation, our furniture and equipment, anything that's not related to our facilities' maintenance. And we're also gonna talk about our capital outlay, facilities-related items that are projects that are greater than $500,000. And we'll talk about why those are divided in that manner a little bit later. So those are the things we're gonna talk about tonight. Again, we'll have three other budget presentations where we'll talk about the other items that relate to our budget. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question so we'll have an understanding of how we're gonna do questions on this? I know it's a report, but obviously there probably will be questions from board members. And are you gonna allow the board members to ask questions as Ms. Klutz goes along or you wanna hold the questions to the end?
I would be more inclined to probably ask as we go because it's such a big document and we may, somebody may forget what they wanted to do or might not be relevant. I think that'd be better. So I tell you what, that's a good point, appreciate you bringing that up. If you've got something, maybe wait, wait till there's a break and then just, just key up and ask to, as a, for a point of order and to be able to ask a question. Thank you, Mr. Schue.
Thank you. So the document that you're looking at is a reflection of our current budget, our total budget. And we're gonna talk about different looks at our budget this, with this document. And you can see that our total budget, I've summarized over in the right-hand corner, is $247 million with some change. And we've broken that into funding sources. And so you'll see that 60% of our total budget comes from state, our, the state funds. 24% comes from local and 5% comes from federal. You also note that child nutrition has 5% of our funds, Kids Plus is 1%, those are enterprise funds, those are self-funding entities. And then you'll also see that the capital, there's the capital fund and the local fund. Local special fund are our grants and those types of things. And we're gonna talk in detail more about those. Okay? So now I wanna talk to you about our operational budget. So when we talk about operational budget, we're gonna exclude our enterprise funds, which are child nutrition and Kids Plus. We're also gonna exclude our, our capital outlay. So what, what we wanna look at are the, the funds that help us, that we have available to us to operate on a day-to-day basis. So capital is not operating, child nutrition and Kids Plus, they are operating, but you can, you're restricted to use those funds for those programs. So to help us run the school system, we have these funds available to us. And so out of our operational funds, you'll see that the state provides 66% of the funds. That number increased from the previous slide. Local provides 26% of the funds and federal, 5% of the funds. Okay? So the next slide, we're gonna talk about total operating budget by object. And what an object is, is how we spend those funds, what those funds are spent on by purpose. So 83% of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits, so we're very labor-intensive. You'll see that 10% is spent on supplies and equipment and 3% is purchasing services. And you'll see that 4% are spent on fixed costs, utilities, insurance contracts, stuff like that. Most of that's utilities and insurances, which you'll see. And that's our total operating budget, federal, state, and local. Okay? Now here's where you'll start seeing some differences. Out of our state operating budget, you're gonna see 96% of our funds that come from the state are spent on salaries and benefits. And only 4% is spent on anything else, which are generally supplies and equipments, 3%. You'll see down here that fixed cost insurances and utilities, there's 0%. And why is that? Because the state doesn't allow us to spend our state dollars for insurances or utilities or things like that. So those are the restrictions that I've talked about. We talk a lot about, so when we get in these budget discussions and you wanna know why this makes sense that we buy this object because it's gonna save us money here. Most often, it's because there's a state or federal restriction that doesn't allow me to use these funds to buy it. So the only option I have is to, to have local, local revenues to purchase this item with. So that's why I'm showing you the makeup of our funding. Our funding sources are very important.
Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
I think Mary's got a question.
Yeah. Do you happen to remember in years past if that 96% for benefits and salaries has been actually a little lower than 96% and a greater portion for supplies and equipment? Because I see it's supplies and equipment, that, that paltry 3%.
I can get you a trending on that. It's always extremely high because a significant amount of our program report codes that the state sends our money into is restricted for salaries and benefits. There are certain programs like EC that is a mixed, it's a mixed program. So you can, you can, you can use salaries and benefits, but you can also buy some equipment or some supplies. But the majority of the state funds, as you can see reflected by the graph, goes towards salaries and benefits. I would say that over, between, since 2008, 2009, there's, there's been a general shift with all funds to go more heavy, heavier on the salaries and benefits and less on supplies. But that, I don't think that's all, only state funds, I think that's state, federal, and local. And those are our choices that we made specifically here in Cabarrus County is to keep people employed and buy less things. Okay? Okay? So this is our local operating budget. And you can see there's a definite swing in the percentages. So there's only 52% of our salaries and benefits, that's, 52% of the budget that's spent on salary and benefits. And you might wonder why? Because 26% of it is, is spent on supplies and equipment and then we have utilities and insurance. So we spend well over $5 million a year on utilities alone. Then you have all of your insurances, property and casualty, all those types of insurances we have that we pay for. And that's, there's a requirement to pay for that at a local. You also have things like repairs and maintenance. Every, all of our dollars for facilities for repairs and maintenance comes from local. So every repair and maintenance is right there on this graph. Transportation in addition. So we don't get enough money from the state to, to take care of all of our transportation needs. So you're seeing a significant amount of repairs and maintenance and even fuel right here in this graph. So that's why those numbers are different. There were less salaries and benefits and more supplies and materials and repairs-type things. You also remember that the state has cut the supply and material budget from the state significantly over, since 2009. And so we are mostly, our supply and material budget is mostly funded from local right now. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Klutz, if you may.
Sure.
On the, the 52% for salaries and benefits, how is that compared to prior years? Are we finding ourselves staying about the same? Are we edging upwards because of less funding from the state and then we're requiring more positions that require local funding? So, I mean, I'm just trying to put that together.
Let me get that data for you because I complete these graphs every single year. So it'd be really easy just to show you that.
Okay, well, you know, like I was saying, it seems like the state just keeps cutting and cutting and cutting and therefore leaving the county to have to pick up where they left off. And I would just like to see how that's trending, if you would. Thank you.
Certainly will.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have a question as well. Kelly, can you give us some examples of what would be in purchased services?
Um, that would be the things that, in, in our maintenance department, so when we contract out for services.
Okay, like the groundskeeping, whether we have a mowing contract?
Absolutely. That would be a perfect example of that. Elevator service, where somebody comes in and monitors that, the elevators were required to do that, that would be a contract service, those kinds of things. Mm-hmm.
And just, school me here, please. Utilities, is the price of a kilowatt hour, the price of a kilowatt hour, anywhere or do we negotiate, for example, electricity with the county for certain expected usage? I guess, do we get a discount in any way on utilities by virtue of the number of facilities that we have? And do we match that up with the county's facilities as well? How do we pay for utilities, I guess is the easier question? Is it?
Asking about the rate or how we? I think you're asking about, do we get a different rate than your normal average customer? Is what I'm, is what I'm hearing.
I'm not aware of a discounted rate. We have a energy manager that monitors our utility bills and, and that type of thing. I can certainly ask him. And I do know that there's an analysis that they do. It's not the rate, there's something else. I'm talking way above my, ah!
But very high, very high level is all I, I mean, no particular details needed here.
I, I was gonna say, first of all, from like, from the electricity standpoint, we get it from two sources. We get it from Duke Energy and we get it from Concord City Electric. And in both cases, I believe you, we'd be recognized as, as a large user from an institutional standpoint, so we do have a benefit of, of that. And, but to be honest with you, I mean, if you were comparing us to a homeowner, yes, our rates are probably better in that regard because of the quantity of electricity we use. But in terms of us compared to the university system or someone else, I doubt that there would be much difference. There is a difference, I believe, between the two utilities. But again, I would agree with Kelly. All right, Cliff Moore, our, our energy manager is the person who can answer that.
But we're a separate customer to those two utilities and, and we're not blended in with the county's use of electricity.
No.
Even though county pays for our utilities, they pay us to pay for our utilities separately. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Carol.
One question. In the local salaries and benefits, is there any, any actual position that maybe is not allowed at the, I mean, at state level that is maybe included in the local level? In other words, do we have some positions in that 52% that maybe is in there that the state will not pay for, that we're paying for at that local level? Like, for instance, maybe is the nurse positions, is that one maybe the state just does not pay for that maybe is in that one? Do we, how many of those do we have that is in that 52%? You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do. I heard two questions. One was, is it allowed or is it not funded? So those, to me, are, those are completely different things. So one, are they allowed? Nurses are definitely allowed. Are they funded? For some units, a small amount of them, are they funded for Cabarrus County schools? No, we got one. I think there's one that's funded for Cabarrus County schools. So there's a lot of positions in that, in that percent that is not funded by the state. But allowed, certainly they're allowed. We would not have those positions on staff if they weren't allowed. Everything that runs through our payroll goes through our audit certification at the state every month and it bumps up against to make sure that that's, it's an allowable or it's agreeable position that, that ties to the chart of accounts and certification and all those things. So it's definitely allowed. It's, there's a lot that's not funded.
So there, what are you?
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, I know they would be allowed, but they're not. But what I'm saying is the state's saying, we're not paying for them. We, we've got to pay for them then. They're, and that's where the states, the state does not pay for them, though. It's not one of the ones they, they pay for, correct?
That's correct.
And that's where the locals have to, to do it. And we've got a lot of those, that's what that 52 is, that they're saying, we don't pay for it. If you want it, you've gotta pay for it. How many of those, is that where that 52 is, that that's all those that they're not paying for and we've gotta pay for?
Part of it. Part of it's a choice. A choice we made locally to reduce class size was what we did years ago. So local dollars helped to, to make our class sizes smaller. We also made a choice to put dollars into, local dollars into EC. And so there's some EC positions there. We have supplements. There's a lot of that is supplements that you're seeing. And then, I already told you, teachers. So the nurses are pulled out now, it's paid directly at the Cabarrus Health Alliance. The county pays them directly, so it's not in here. One of the things, let me give you an example. At Budget Committee, we talked about how the state funds assistant principals. And I went back and pulled that, that data. So the state funds one principal, one assistant principal at 11, about 1,100 and some odd students, one. So think about the makeup of our schools as they are now. So we have a number of schools that would not even qualify for one assistant principal in that school, a number of them. Now, to get a second AP in that school, according to the state formula, you would have to have 2,200 children in that school according to the state formula. That's, yeah, my teacher liaison is, is dying over here. So that's, that's where our local dollars come in. So this, and, so does the state think it's reasonable to have one AP for 1,100 children and two APs for 2,200? No, they don't. They saw that as an opportunity to cut a pot of money when they had to cut. So rather than cutting teachers, they cut the AP and they made locals make a choice. So anyway, that's an example. There's, there's some APs, a lot of APs in that number.
I think that's where I, I was kinda coming, because I knew that's been some debate where, on APs. That, that was one of the debates that came up. And I was wondering how many we had and APs was, was one of the areas that was.
According to the state formula, we would only receive 30 APs. 30. How many schools do we have? Exactly. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Go ahead, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. That was the 58, what is it, the 58.6 million and that's what we're, that graph is showing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we're, now we're talking about our federal operational budget and it, it's, you know, pretty similar to our total operational budget. We spent 83% of that on salaries and benefits, eight on purchases, and 9% on supplies and equipment. And, and that just comes down to the regulations behind the federal grants. If the federal grant says you need to spend it on this and you need to spend it, then that's what we do. And so that's what drives the, the spending and the grant, and the, the graph. Okay?
I'm gonna, and, and can you give us just one example of the purchased services from the federal chart?
Um, a lot of that could be, we, staff development. So we would ask for someone to come in and do a staff development activity that benefits the entire school.
Majority of the federal operational budget is mainly Title I-style type grants?
We have Title I and EC are our main, the largest two federal grants that we have. And we have some smaller ones, but those are the big ones. Okay? Okay. I apologize again, I did not realize this was so light. So, and what I'm telling you here is through our budget development process, we have two goals. One is the superintendent must present you a, a recommended budget by May 1st of each year. And if we follow our schedule, you will have your recommended budget presented to you by the superintendent by April 14th, I believe, finalized. And then the Board of Education, you must present your formal request to the county by May the 15th of each year. And so as long as we stay on schedule, we will not have any problem with that whatsoever.
Kelly, don't worry about that being light because we all have paper copies that we're looking at, so we're fine.
Good thing.
Yeah, and on the laptops, it's bright.
Is it bright? Good, okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So, and I just wanted to go over our budget calendar and our budget process just so that you and the public's aware of, of what it takes to get to this point. So our facilities team members started walking the schools and the departments back in November and December and visiting each school. In December, they determined cost project estimates for those, those projects and those requests. In January, we sent back this request for project back to the school and said, schools, please verify that this is accurate so that we were getting their buy-in and input. Then in January, mid-January, the schools had prepared their budget request with the, the use of their school improvement teams. And if you're familiar with school improvement teams, they have lots of staff on it, but they also have lots of parent representation on there. So we're pulling lots of parents and community there at that level. So school improvement teams are involved in the school request and then the school requests come up to the budget, to our office and then eventually to the Budget Committee. They consolidated those requests into one request by level, elementary level, middle level, and high school level. And then those requests came into the Budget Committee by level. Okay? Once that happened, we took that, those requests in a, in a big spreadsheet to Cabinet and we ran it through a TRIGO process so that we could, we took, I'm trying to remember how many, maybe 60 items or so. And we kind of consolidated them. So if we were asking for, if you were asking for a, a lead teacher, if you were asking for an ESL teacher and you were asking for a regular teacher, we said, okay, we're gonna consolidate that and that's a teacher. And if, if this teacher, if this school wants an ESL teacher, they can have an ESL teacher. So that's all in one request, okay? So we also did that if they requested teacher assistance, we said, if you want a teacher, you can have two and a half teacher assistants or you can have one teacher, we're gonna allow you to make that decision. Okay? So that's, it'll be school-based decisions. So that's where we did that consolidation process and we got that list down to a manageable level. So we know that there's a lot more needs than we can even, even attempt to accommodate. Okay? So then we started our budget meetings, our Budget Committee meetings. There were four of them, we processed three of them already, all-day meetings. And we've run through a lot of data and background. I've provided you a lot of justification documents that we're not gonna go through today, but they're at your disposable, disposable, their disposal for viewing. And then now we're here at our budget meeting. So we're at our first work session. Again, I've already talked to you about what we're gonna discuss today. The next meeting is the March 20th meeting. We're gonna go over some more capital things. We'll also talk about our operational expansion request, including technology, facilities, and transportation. April 7th, we're gonna talk about continuation expense, those unavoidable increases like salary increases we hope, health insurance, retirement increases, those types of things. And then on April the 14th, we're gonna ask you to adopt a proposed budget. So any questions or concerns that you have, we wanna hear those prior to April 14th and we wanna get those resolved. And again, those, they're the reminders of the dates that we have those requirements to take care of. Okay? So then, a lot of times I get questions about the next steps, you know, here in this meeting. So I wanted just to go ahead and share that with you. So by June, after we adopt our proposed budget, what happens? So by June 30th, 2014, the, the county is required by law to adopt their budget. So by that time, at that time, they'll let us know what the impact is on us, what we've been funded, local, capital, FMD is part of, part of local. So we'll know how to, to implement our budget. Anywhere from June to whenever they decide they want to, they, the state will adopt their budget and that will impact our final budget. And after the state and the local adopts their budget, then I can take that information and mold it in with the proposed budget that you adopt and I can make you a final budget. And then you can adopt that budget. And that'll be whenever local and state gets theirs. We know when local will be, but whenever the state finishes theirs up. Okay? And so in the budget development process, we just wanted to, to call your attention to, everything that we did aligns with our, aligning our resources with our vision, vision, mission, goals, and objectives. It aligns with our strategic plan. And so part of our process through the Budget Committee was bringing you guys in and ladies, lady, in to go through a process. And we were to develop our objectives. And our objectives are the things that are important to us that would, we would measure our budget items against so that we would set the priorities for our, our budget. And so these are the objectives that, that we all came up with. You were involved, Budget Committee was involved, Cabinet was involved. You were involved, Budget Committee was involved, Cabinet was involved. So we had lots of input in selecting the objectives. And so these are the things that are important to us and are driving us, and they all aligned with our strategic plan, because we went in and we put the number on every line item to see how it aligned with the strategic plan.
Kelly, just for the sake of the viewing audience, can you just give a very brief description of, you used the term cabinet, not everybody, they may not know who that is? And also, just a real quick refresher of who's on the Budget Committee? And maybe not name by name, but the representation of, you know, elementary principal and a middle school principal, or whatever the case would be? And specifically mention the board members that are on the committee.
Okay. I have a document in this presentation that has the Budget Committee members on it, so if we're good with that. And then our cabinet is our deputy superintendent, our assistant superintendents, and I'm going to just go down the, Lynn Wickie, FMD, Glenda Jones, Human Resources, I got Kelly, Matthew Fayle. Did I forget anyone? Me.
Ronnie.
Ronnie Boone, she's sitting back there, and Chris, Chris Lauder is, so, okay? Okay. All right. And so I'm not going to read the objectives to you, but these are the things I would, you know, call your attention to in the public, that these are the things that drove our decisions and why our priorities are our priorities, because we believe these are the things that are going to get us to our strategic plan to accomplish these things. Okay? So there we go. So these are our Budget Committee members. And our cabinet is on here, and so I failed to even mention that. So it lists what area you represent. And so the board asked in the retreat to provide, see if we could get more community membership. And so we were able to do that. And so again, our goal was to make a budget recommendation by our deadline. And I'm going to, I'm going to pause for questions, and then I'm going to go into our capital outlay budget.
Board members, any questions to this point? David, your hand up?
You've heard people talk about unfunded mandates and what that means to the public. Have we ever done a study in which we tried to list the expenses that are mandated and have some kind of way of quantifying whether or not, or to what extent, those mandates are adequately funded or not adequately funded? I mean, we talk about that individually a great deal, but have we ever compiled an ongoing list of expenses that we can then look at in total? And if not, that's fine. I'm not suggesting that, because I know it would be a huge undertaking. But I was just wondering if we have any source of information that would give us some perspective on whether or not mandated expenses are adequately funded?
Um.
That's a big question, I know, but I'm really just asking for a yes or a no, as opposed to any particular detail.
The answer is no. Mandated expenses are not adequately funded. That's for sure.
Yes, we know that. I'm sure of that anecdotally, or not, or in general, but we don't have a quantification of that, do we?
We do not have a list of those things. Certainly, it's just as you've said, we talk about them as they arise. So we have read to achieve the summer. We know that we've.
Right. We've had those discussions.
Right. We know that the budget's about $300,000 that the state sends down, and we know that it's going to cost us about $600,000. So as we go along, we measure those and we talk about those, but have we ever compiled a list of those? Not that I'm aware of.
But it's a constant moving target as well, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to capital? Ms. Carpenter?
I'm with David. I wish we could compile one of those and start doing that, just have it. And that way, when somebody starts asking us, we've got something we can put before them, because that's one of the TRIGO things. That's the very first thing we asked on TRIGO. Is it mandated? And, you know, it has to pass that to start with. You know, and that's our first question we asked. And so we ought to get that and start maybe making, compiling a list of that thing and putting a dollar amount with it. And when that does, that way, we've got something to come back to.
I will certainly start that document.
I was really afraid that Kelly would beat me if I suggested that. I just really wanted the information, but thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for that suggestion.
Along with the same lines, the charter school impact? It's kind of related? The charter, charter school impact, isn't that kind of related?
Yes, that'll be in our continuation cost, yes.
Schubert, do you have a question?
I just have a comment. If you start down this path of the mandates, don't forget about all the FMD mandates that, with ponds and backflow preventers, and because those are all requirements by the state that suck money out of maintenance. And we don't get anything from them, except that we get to say that we checked a box.
And Mr. Schu?
Yes, I just want to continue on with the conversation that Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison had stated about that particular list. I mean, obviously, it would be very good for this board to know those items and have a, you know, a, an accumulation of what it has been for the last number of years, because these items that we're talking about are legislative items that would have to be dealt with on a state level. And therefore, we would want to maybe work with the North Carolina School Boards Association and maybe try to get some type of help from them, maybe not only just for Cabarrus County schools, but from the state in general, to work, you know, we got a good lobbyist up at the School Board Association. And maybe we can start directing some more attention to the state. If they're going to give us something to do, they need to give us the money to do it, instead of keep passing it on. Because what it ultimately ends up with is the local citizens of Cabarrus County having to pick up what the state should have already picked up. And so I can see a ton of merit in this. And so the sooner that, I mean, I know you've got your plate full right now with trying to get the budget done, plus your normal routine things. I understand that, Kelly. But it would be, I think, of a big benefit, you know, to us to help curb the continued list of unfunded mandates from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. And if nothing else, it gives us a vehicle to have conversations with our local representatives. You know, if we can't get it to NCSBA and to the lobbyists or whatnot, at least maybe we can talk with Representative Pittman and Johnson and Senator Hartzell when we are here and around town. And, you know, obviously, we'll be seeing them all through the summer, as we typically do. So anyway, okay. Are we ready to move on to capital? Okay, let's proceed.
Okay. So as I said earlier, this is our capital outlay, non-facilities. It doesn't have anything to do with the repairs and maintenance, or additions, or new schools. These are all non-facilities related. Okay? Whoops. Here we go. So we have to talk about, so when we get capital outlay dollars, they're in a, in a pot of money. They're just capital outlay. And so over the last few years, we've received a million dollars. Well, we know that that is certainly not adequate for the needs that we have. So we know we've already identified $250 million of capital outlay needs that are related to facilities. And then we also have needs, we can't forget our normal operations, our transportations, our schools, furniture and equipment, those types of things. We can't just ignore those. And so for the last few years, we've had to ignore them. We didn't really ignore them. We just couldn't do anything about them, because we didn't have any dollars. So what we're proposing here is an allocation method of the funding. So we, right now, at this moment, we have no idea what our funding for capital outlay from the county will be. But we know that the majority of our needs come from facilities and repairs of our buildings. So we're suggesting that there can be an allocation, there can be a percent that goes of the funding to facilities, repairs, and then there needs to be a percent that goes to all of our other needs. And so in this example, we're proposing that 90% of the funding allocated go to facilities and maintenance, repairing of the buildings and grounds, capital projects, and then 10% of the funding would go to this, this other area. Okay? So that means if you got $10 million of capital outlay funding, then $9 million would go to the facilities repairs, and $1 million would go to things like transportation and furniture and those types of things. Okay? Now, those numbers aren't set in stone. You do not have to do 90% and 10%. You can do 85 and 15, or 95 and 5. Because we don't know what the allocation, the capital allocation's going to be, it's hard to really put your finger on that. We know that we need, you know, X, Y, and Z of non-capital, or non-facilities type items. So this is the model that we're proposing. If you look at the 90% that goes to FMD, facilities and maintenance, we've also broken those down into disciplines. And so we would also suggest that within that discipline, that 90% would be broken up to, and certainly you can change the percentage here, too. But the way the percentage was allocated was based on FMD, facilities and maintenance recommendation, but it was also carefully aligned with our needs. So if our needs, the list said that we had 8% of our needs were roofing, then they, they made a similar, it's 3.75 in this list, so they made a similar percentage on that area. So they aligned them fairly closely. Doesn't have to be that way. If you wanted to put 100% of your dollars into roofing, you can put 100% of your dollars into roofing. Those are, you know, those are decisions that you can make. But this, these are aligned fairly closely to the way that the needs played out. And you'll see those in the spreadsheet. So I'm going to go on to, so this is, if we followed that model, this is the 10% that we're talking about. So if we had, we received $10 million, this would be the $1 million that we were allocated. And so the items that we prioritized.
You talk about 100, you said, no, I'm confused on this.
I'm sorry. Go back.
Yeah, I'm confused on this.
Okay. So we're just suggesting, we've received a million dollars every year, but we're suggesting that we would get $10 million, just as an example. And if, if we received $10 million, 10% of that would go to non-facilities type items, which would be, this is what we're about to review. And so that would be a million dollars. Okay?
Are you following that? That's the page you're looking at there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That, 10% on that side, you flipped a page, and that's what would make up that 10%, even though it's more than a million.
This is all hypothetical for illustration.
It depends on the funding.
Now, are there any salaries or benefits or anything part of this $10 million?
No, this is capital only. And so capital is.
So this goes directly, it flows directly to those particular items that we have here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. So when we went through this process in Budget Committee, this is how the prioritization ended up. So there was a strong need for furniture in schools and departments. And I'm just going to, I'm going to flip through this real quick, and then I'm going to go, I'm going to go back. See, if you'll see the next page, 23, that there's a justification document for every request. And so I'm not going to go through and read that to you. You can, you can read the justification. Some are more detailed than others, and some have additional backup. So you can see for the furniture item, some of the furniture that our schools are dealing with currently. And so in Budget Committee, we had principals or directors or cabinet members come in and talk to us about the need. And if you've been here a while, you'll know that prior to our budget cuts, we used to have a capital outlay allocation to the schools, and the schools could buy furniture and equipment, whatever they wanted to, with their capital outlay allocation. And they have not had that since, I think, 2009, 10. So anything that they've purchased, cafeteria tables, desks, any technology, anything like that, they've purchased out of their instructional supply money, of which has been cut. Okay? So there was a strong need for furniture for the schools and departments. And so you'll see the request was $635,000. And the highlighted column is what we're requesting. And the reason the request is different is because we're in a position where we know that our budget is far exceeds, our budget needs far exceed the ability for the county to pay. And we have to start juggling somehow. So we have $250 million of needs in repairs. We have multiple million dollars of technology that we need. We have, when we come to you, we're going to tell you about the salary request and the continuation items that we have. So we have just multiple millions of dollars' worth of needs. And so to say that we don't need $635,000 is not the answer. We need $635,000, but we are juggling our needs and trying to present a recommendation that we can live with. Okay?
Excuse me. One question. I know when we were in discussion on the buses, on buying the buses, a couple of questions come up, and I just wondered if those questions had been answered as of yet.
What was that? What was the question?
One of the questions we talked about was checking on the, I know that, on the sheet, it said propane buses. And the question that was brought up was about natural gas buses. And I know that they are available. We've been, I've seen them in many states, seen them in Charlotte, and I wondered if any other had been checked about natural gas. And the other thing was, I was wondering on this transportation, on the sheet, if, if any kind of dollar amount has been placed on, how much of this is due to the Weddington IB program on transportation? How much of that is due to that school going online? And was that, was that figured in to all of this? Yeah, I know, there was transportation costs, and how much was that? And is that, is that in this amount also?
Okay. So I appreciate you asking that question, because it's a good opportunity for me to tell you that any of the questions or comments that you guys had, or anyone had from the Budget Committee, were notated, and they were answered, and they were posted on our website, and we sent that information back to you, so that hopefully you can review that information. And if that doesn't answer your question, then you can, you can ask us again. So.
I missed, well, I missed one. I was out of state. And that's why I didn't know if it had been.
You did.
And I, and I wanted, I was just curious about that.
But I would, I would just guide you to our finance department website under Budget Committee. And each meeting has the minutes posted with the questions and the questions answered. And if that doesn't give you the answer that you were looking for, let me know, and we will, we will correct or get you more information. But we were, hopefully, we were able to answer every question that you have. It was certainly our goal and intent.
Okay.
And I didn't have this question about Weddington in the meeting, so I will get you that answer.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So Carolyn brings up a point about the yellow school buses. Certainly, we need those for enrollment. We have used up, with this year, we will have used up all of our credits that we had from going to three-tier. So we'll certainly, this is the first year we've purchased buses, will have to purchase buses since we went to three-tier. And that is a significant savings to our local county, because we did go to three-tier. Millions of dollars that we have saved by doing that.
The other question, and this was not brought up, but thought about at a different time, when we're looking at the band instruments and the band uniforms, and I don't know if, I can't remember if this was discussed at all or even thought about, on the band uniforms or the big band instruments. I know that was discussed. This is for big instruments. Was it ever discussed whether we could actually ask these individuals that are, that are using these big instruments possibly to do a lease, or ask them to pay a lease thing for using these big instruments? You know, the other students, they're having to buy their equipment, or lease their equipment to play in the band. Well, if you're. Well, if you're be using one of these big instruments, has it ever been thought about saying, okay, you're going to pay X amount to lease this big? I mean, they're not buying it, but we're having to do that and that amount going into an account and keep building. So when we do have to buy these things, we've got something. I mean, I'm just throwing out something. The same way on the uniforms, that they actually pay an amount to lease that uniform for that year and that money to go into account to keep accumulating to find out how long those uniforms last. And that way, it go into account and keep accumulating. So when those things wear out, that money's been being saved all those years and can rebuy them instead of us having to dish out that money ever so often. I know that they have to, you know, they pay a certain amount to do it, but it's basically getting into pay to play, you know, basically. But has this been thought about or talked about?
I can answer. Part of the question on the instrument is if you play one of the big ones, you do have to purchase the mouthpiece. So there is some cost there to the student.
But, I mean, but what I'm saying is, have we thought about, because the other, I mean, if you play an instrument, you've got to lease some?
Yeah, oh, yeah, right, right. But I mean, I just wanted you to know at least that there is something there that the student has to purchase and in the uniforms. Before you answer that, can you just roll into that? When it says start replacement cycle, so is that one school? And then every year we would spend 40 to replace to go through? I assume we're talking about the high school marching bands?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to go back up to line item number three, to the cameras on the yellow buses. This would complete the coverage. So there's, there's buses that, we did a lot of our buses or most of our buses, and then there's buses that just don't have them yet. So we would want to complete that. The next line item would be the activity buses. And if you saw, if you were at our Budget Committee presentation, you would see how desperate we are in need of activity buses. We run our activity buses much longer than we do our yellow school buses. And if yellow school buses aren't safe, I'm not sure why we think that activity school buses are safe. So we have asked and we're requesting at least three to get toward the six that we Next would be service trucks for mechanics and in our Transportation Department. And so we feel confident, confident that we will be able to provide, to get these mechanics within our transportation budget funds that are either already allocated and Dan Mann has done a great job with his cost savings and/or new additional monies that we will get next year. So if we get the, if we can afford the mechanics, we need to have a truck for them to drive. So that's why that's there. Okay?
May I speak?
Yes.
Just for a second. That portion of his budget won't be presented until the March 20th meeting?
I'm going to present that within the expansion. I'm going to present just what he's requested and then I'm going to tell you that he can fund it. So you're not going to make a decision on it, but I want you just to know.
Right. I just wanted others to hear that same thing, that he'd actually saved enough money to fund more mechanics.
It's a celebration, so I want you guys to know.
Okay. Mr. Harrison, do you have a comment?
Only that while we know it, the public needs to know what an absolutely fantastic job Transportation has done in the last year and has saved the county a great deal of money and is doing a, I can't find a good word for it, a marvelous, great, great, great job of being stewards of the local dollars. And Transportation is to be commended for that, Mr. Superintendent and Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Go ahead, Kelly. Please proceed.
And that's a good lead-in for my next item. So there's, we need a bed for a wrecker. So what happens in, so when I was talking to you about funding sources and what the state will allow us to buy and what they will not allow us to buy, so the state's going to buy the wrecker for us, but they're not going to buy the bed. They say that's a local expense and we have to buy it. And you can't use state operating money because you can't buy equipment with it. So that is a local capital expense and that's why it's listed here. That's the reason I went through all of that information on your charts this, earlier today, to show you that there are lots of restrictions, what seems like it makes sense. Oh, Dan has saved a lot of money in Transportation. He's done a great job. He can pay for the mechanics, but he can't pay for this equipment. Okay? So that's why it's here. But, and if, you know, if we're going to get the wrecker, we have to pay for the bed.
And I think there was some issue with compliance, wasn't there, as well?
Yes, and that's probably in the justification here. And then I'm going to go on to next, number seven. Those are, he's asking for two additional minivans to transport for the special programs. And we, that's where we have saved an enormous amount of money. We put 10 minivans on the road to save money and time, and we have seen an enormous savings. So he wants to continue to put a couple on every year and then renew those too. So certainly we know that those are definitely, he was able to pay for those in the first year with the savings. So those are definitely good investments. The next one is band instruments for middle and high school for $200,000. And then we'll go to the floor lifts for the buses so that they can, the buses will be lifted and the gentleman, the mechanics or, I don't know if we have any lady mechanics, can go under them and work on them easier. And then there's the band uniforms, as we talked about before. So that would start a replacement cycle. And previously, when we had capital outlay allocation to the schools, the schools were able to use their capital outlay money for, for band uniforms too. But certainly when that was cut, they stopped buying furniture, they stopped buying technology, they stopped buying band uniforms. So it's just been a struggle for them to replace anything.
Just as a point of information, again, I was flummoxed to learn this at one time or another, but I got the impression that mechanics use their own equipment. They use their own tools. When they come on the job, the tools they're using, the wrench they're using to fix the equipment is their own personal property. And of course, we, we don't calculate that into any of these numbers here. Do we in any way account for actual tools like that, which our mechanics use? I just was, I guess I'm asking for a clarification about that.
We don't traditionally. That was a budget item, but because of the savings that he, Dan has been able to recoup, we have a plan to be able to take care of some of that this year. So that's why-
Goodie.
Yeah, so that's why you're not seeing it here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move on, Brian's not here, but I guess one thing I would like to ask, I mean, it's the age-old, and I don't want to stir anything up, but there's the age-old sort of band versus athletics. And so if we're looking at a replacement cycle, I guess I'd like to compare it to what kind of cycle we go on for other sports teams' uniforms, you know, just to be able to have the information and compare. And I think obviously the booster clubs help with that, but bands have boosters too, but they probably don't have as much opportunity to generate revenue as the gate does at the game and whatnot. So just as some sort of fair-type comparison, it'd be nice to know what a normal, typical high school does on that type of replacement.
Okay. All right. So if there are no other questions on this area, I'm going to skip through the justifications and we'll go on to the next area. But I don't want to move here unless, I want to make sure we're clear, we don't have any questions. Okay? I'm going to move on.
I'm sorry, I was-
Yeah, you're okay.
I was-
I'm just checking for questions before I move on.
Okay. Any other questions, board members?
And I would say, do pay particular attention to our justification documents. The staff work long and hard on these. And so, take a look. So now we're going to move into the area of capital projects that are greater than $500,000. And so you need to know why the lists are divided. We had, in the past, we had a list that was $200,000, less than $200,000 or greater than $200,000. And there's no real science to it, but the county, we got together with the county after last budget season. I think that they really understand our needs and that they were massive after looking and plowing through that list. And so we kind of got in there and looked at that list and we decided that we should divide it at greater than $500,000 and less than $500,000. And I think, I don't want to speak for them, just, I believe that the intent is, greater than $500,000 is something they can finance. They can bond, they can debt, whatever. Anything less than $5,000 is probably something they want to pay cash for or find some other way. So we have two lists. One is greater than $500,000, one is less than $500,000. And then the other request that we talked about was they needed to be able to five-year plan. They have a CIP, a Construction in Progress, or a, anyway, I'm losing my acronyms right now. Capital Improvement Plan. There's, they stand for the same thing, Capital Improvement Plan. And it's five, they're planning five years out. They needed to be able to incorporate us into their, their planning. So they needed us to identify the projects that needed to be done this fiscal year, this budget year, 14, 15, and then go out five years so that they could get an idea of where they need to be. In addition, they wanted us to identify by discipline. And by discipline, I mean things like construction, roofing, mechanical, playgrounds, those types of things. And so that's what we did. And so this document is a summary of that. And so you'll see at the top of the documents, we've identified $231 million of needs at this point. And this is what our staff, the Facilities and Maintenance, that staff went out and accumulated the data. We've hired the Facilities Assessment Study out and we feel that this number will grow and they will identify more things. But right now, this is what we know our needs are right now. And again, I told you that they started in November and they tacked on from a previous year. So if you'll look at this list, in 2014, 2015, we know that our construction needs are summarized and there's $102 million that we need right now. And then you just go down, the mechanical and environmental is 8 million. And I'm just going to show you kind of how to read this document and then we can move on. And then our parking and fence, park fencing, drainage, those kinds of things, $1.2 million. And you'll see our roofing is $9.9 million that we need right now. Okay? And then you have some kitchen and bathroom things, there's $1.1 million. And so the usefulness of this document is that if the county says, we want to take care of every roof that you have that is leaking and it's got to be taken care of right now that you've identified, then they can say $9.9 million is the number. We've provided them the data to be able to make that decision, if roofs are that important to them. Okay? So that's why we did this. Then they can look and they can plan for 2015, 2016, and they can say, they're going to have $3 million more dollars next year. And then the next year, we're going to have $4 million. And so that's the, the idea of the document and how we're planning. Okay? Then you can see over to the far right, it ties over to the $231, $31 million that we have identified. Okay? Questions about the layout of the document?
Ms. Klutz, on the, just hypothetically, on the 2014, 15 list, their construction, in the list that you're providing to the county and to us at some point, where are those items broken down that shows us what's in that construction item number?
Next.
Obviously it's schools.
Next.
Next page?
Next.
Okay, all right. Well, if I'd known that, I wouldn't ask that question.
I did earlier with the Budget Committee, so.
That's okay.
Well, then it's my turn to ask a dumb question, which I'm-
A dumb question, I'll load it. That was a dumb question.
I'm very qualified to ask dumb questions. So on the slide that you're on right now, these are local expenses.
These are because, mhm.
And these are somewhat, I don't mean hypothetical, but they're ballpark figures. Is that correct?
They're the best that we-
It's the best crystal ball we have right now.
Certainly they're estimates.
Sure, sure, sure.
I mean, and we did not have an architect or an engineer, I mean, we have our staff. We didn't, you know, they are not final plans. And so certainly they could vary-
And that's understood.
Over time.
And again, a very general question is, will this tick and tie at some future point with the Facilities Assessment Study that we've discussed?
That, absolutely, that would be the goal. Once we get the Facilities Assessment, we would hope to blend these documents and then present one.
Very closely-
Aligned.
Parallel and aligned with each other. So I'm looking at-
That's going to be a task, but yes.
Sure, sure, sure. But the Facilities Assessment will not vary greatly from what you're presenting-
Hope not.
Here. I mean, except for unknown, except for unknown issues and things. Okay?
That's the goal.
I just want to make sure that we'll be talking about the same thing two different ways in the future.
That's, no, we would expect to align and put these, there would be duplications and so we would-
Got you, got you, got you. Coming at it from two different directions.
Certainly not. Mhm, yes.
Thank you.
I want to address one of the things that you asked about local expenses. Yes, you would expect these to be local expenses. The only exception there would be if there were lottery funds that were available. And as this board knows, our lottery funds are being used for bond, or debt proceeds. And so had those, if those proceeds, if those funds were not used for debt, then we could have those funds available for these types of things. But they're, they're not available at this point.
They go straight to the county?
We, we sign, both boards sign that document to release those and they go to the county for debt. Okay? Okay. So the next document is quite small, and so I hope with your iPads you can take and move them out and make them bigger, or with your laptops. I also gave, put a couple of hard copies out there. Hard copies are still small, too. It's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of data. And I'm not sure how to make it bigger for you, other than just giving you an iPad and pulling it out. We can print it on bigger paper for you. But I want to focus on, I want to show you how this document is structured. Okay? So the first thing that you'll see far left is the fiscal year that we've identified that we need this item. So the new elementary school, we've said, we need this item 2014, 2015. We need it this next budget year. Then we've put it in, into a column or a discipline area that's called Construction. Okay? And then you see all the other disciplines. And then over to the far right, you see a priority level that's highlighted. We prioritize the items within discipline. So construction is competing against construction, roofs are competing against roofs. Roofs are not competing against kitchen. Roofs are not competing against HVAC. So if the county decides they want to fund construction, then here's our list, one, two, three, and four. If they decide they want to fund roofs, then here are the 10 roofs that we want to fund in our priority. Okay? So we reviewed this document in Construction Subcommittee. We reviewed this document in Budget Committee, and now we're reviewing it here. So there's notations to the far right, if there's anything that we want you to know. So we know that there was funding approved for that first elementary school, and we just made some notations there. We also know that there was funding set aside for the middle school and we made those notations there. Okay? So we, we didn't want to take those items off because we know that the funding that was approved or allocated or set aside is not the amount that we think that it's going to take to, to fund those schools. So the $231 million, it's at the bottom of this document, includes the cost of both of those- of those schools. But we did notate it over to the right. Okay? Do you have any questions about how the document is laid out or presented? Okay.
Board members, any questions on the document? Format, or I guess anything that's...
I've got it. This is really a great layout. I compliment the Budget Committee for the way you've got it laid out. I, I do have a question in reference to the, one of the expense items there. The, the $7 million for the technology facilities, maintenance for a facility to share, store, service, repair, and those type things. And then I look down further, and now that, that item was scheduled for 2014, 15, which is something that we're wanting to do, obviously, pretty quick, looks like, $7 million. And then when we go down a little further, I see where we have budgeted a half million dollars to tear down the old Long School Building. It seems like that they might need to be some thought in putting that building into use for something besides tearing it down. You know, I mean, that's just a thought that I had, you know? I mean, you're talking about a facility that is relatively in the center of the county. And, you know, there's a lot of land on that site if it wasn't being used for an educational facility. And it seems to me like that needs to be considered for repurpose rather than tearing down to build a $7 million storage facility. And that's just a thought for the Budget Committee to be thinking about, and, you know, obviously, Dr. Shepherd and, you know, all of those involved in it. But, you know, the facility itself, obviously, it's a very old building. But then again, we're not talking about using it for an educational facility forever. But it would work good for storage, though, if it could be renovated or whatever, instead of spending $7 million for something else and a half million to tear that down. It might be that we could spend a couple million on that building and on that site and save $3 or $4 million versus tearing it down and having an empty lot that don't know what we'd do with, other than sell it, which it wouldn't be worth that much, anyway. So just some thought for the Budget Committee to think about.
There was some conversation in Budget Committee about a joint venture with the county and the schools working together on a storage facility, certainly very preliminary, but it would, it would be great to work with the county on things like that. And one other thing I failed to tell you is that the, there's some highlighting in pink or purple, whatever that is, at the bottom. And so these are things that if you, if you do X, then you wouldn't do Y. So if you, if you built a school, then you, if you rebuild a school, you wouldn't do some of these other things. And so we didn't feel like we wanted to take those things off of the list in case you didn't get the funding to, to rebuild a school. So we just wanted to notate, you want to do one or the other. You don't have to do both.
And the other thing, just make sure you read out to the side the note, we did have some conversation at the Subcommittee level about in the current economic climate of being able to find space that would make more sense to lease than it would to, to build that facility. So, you know, and again, sharing that with, with the county may, may make more sense. And if I'm not mistaken, we have had inquiries about the property where Long is located, if I'm not mistaken. There has been a developer that has inquired about that. So that's, you know, that, that would be part of it, too. I mean, all of those are things that we would have to discuss and make sure we've got the right plan in place for the long, the long term. Ms. Carpenter, do you have a comment?
Yeah, one of my questions is, and I'm sure you've already thought of this, and it's already been explored, what they would do with that modular unit that's in the back of Long. Because I remember that is one of the, that was bought with federal money, and that has to be, you know, has to be moved somewhere or something because that was federal dollars that purchased that. And I know that that's probably been...
Yeah, that's the glory of a modular unit, is mobile.
It's mobile. But I know that it has to be, you know, dealt with accordingly. So that would, and so we would have to do something with that. Because that was, that was, I remember, we got that right after, I think, right after we got on the board with that. So I know that would have to be dealt with accordingly with that. But, and a shame, looking around this area, we had so many box stores and space that could be utilized. I would hope that we would explore every option with what we've got available before going out and trying to redo something.
Yep, that's exactly what we were talking about. You know, trying to, to think outside the normal process and having those types of facilities available now that, you know, in the past probably weren't available, to see if it makes sense. Okay, Dr. Phillips?
Kelly, I have a question on the, in the first page, there was a $2 million to purchase land for Northwest Schools. Now, that's in addition to the money that's already been set aside for land for the elementary school. Is this kind of a proactive move that we know there's a lot of growth in that area? We better lock in some...
Yes.
...property before it's all gone?
Yes. That's in addition.
And just...
Mr. Harrison?
For my own understanding, again, you're basically saying that the county staff, at least, and your peers in the county staff have embraced or accepted this approach so that going forward, we can show our prioritizations and break things out and constantly refer back to this as a fairly stable tool to use, to present to the staff, and hopefully facilitate turnaround of consideration of those needs?
We are much closer than we have been in the past. And so we worked together and, and created the document so that it would work in, in their format and their setting. Whereas before, we just kind of presented the, the data as we, we saw it. But we work closely with them. So is it perfect and will we need to tweak it? I'm sure we will need to tweak it and move. But we are so much closer to where we can, we can both use the, the tool and the data to our benefits for our, both of our budgets.
Proactively for both of us, more so than in the past?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Again, congratulations to all involved for putting this together, and hopefully, the communication between us and the county will be much better in the future as we move forward with this tool. Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan, you have a comment?
I do, and this will, we'll be talking about this in a little bit, a little bit later on, about the Facilities Assessment Study. Now, I have to assume that what we're expecting to come out of that study, more than likely, is already in this particular report that you have. Or are we talking about potentially additional, more than the $237 million or $231, whatever the figure was? So whenever the Facility Assessment Study comes out, they may come out and say it's $150 million, and they may come out and say it's $300 million. But whichever it is, though, we'll have to correlate that into this so that the county better understand what we're asking for. But it definitely will fluctuate, though. I'm, I'm thinking that it will fluctuate greatly. Lynn, and you might want to address that, since you have been spearheading the Facility Assessment Study. Just for clarity for the listening audience and those that's here.
Absolutely. I think what you have to understand is, we, we would give this document as a starting point to the consultants doing the facilities assessment need. There's another document that's been created, which is a security assessment done by Mark III, that it's also information that we, as the owner, would be giving to the consultants. We certainly don't want them to have to recreate or travel new ground. The flip side is, we want them to look at what was, what was identified, and perhaps they have a completely different take on it. We, we would like that information from them as well. But rather than doing double work, if, if we know that a roof is bad, then, then certainly we're going to let them know that, and then going in, they'll be looking at what it might take to, to really do that and compare costs and that sort of thing. I think the other thing is, we don't have costs for the security assessment. We don't have, for example, ADA assessment on, on the schools. There are other, other elements that will need to be addressed by the Facilities Assessment that have not been touched by, by these numbers yet. Does that answer your questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, Kelly, please proceed.
I have one more. Just for clarification, Kelly, on your, no, I've lost it. On your overview page, the one with all the little brown boxes?
Yes, that one.
It, it shows for next fiscal year for construction, $102 million. But you're saying that does not take into account the $31 million that was already allocated to us by the commissioners in January, so...
So we don't really need the $70 million. It's not...
So that's right. All we're asking for is $71 million in addition to that.
In addition.
So let's not overblow the, the request.
But that, now, we, now, keep in mind, we haven't reviewed the less than $500,000 list yet. Sorry.
It's like the little water drop torture. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Walter, you have a comment?
Yeah, well, I looked through the list. I didn't see anything about the relocating or moving the PLC. We're gonna, you know, I don't think that's sustainable to keep it in the same location long-term. We're gonna have to do something to address that at some point. There wasn't anything in here.
Okay. Do you remember?
I don't remember discussing that at Subcommittee level.
Well, we've got a programs that are expanding in that, that school. That school is at capacity practically. So we're gonna have to figure out something to do in a, in a short term, and there's nothing here that addresses that.
We'll note that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, please proceed.
I am at your mercy for questions, and if you don't have any other question, that's the last of the budget presentation for tonight.
Okay, board members, this was information purposes only. So even this week, as you're going, if you have questions, email, send them to Kelly and just, you know, as you go through. This is a lot. It's a lot, it's a big document, and there's a lot in it. And there's things just like what Mr. Walter just pointed out that may, may, may have been overlooked. And, and so feel free to, to ask plenty of questions between now, and we've got a couple other opportunities to have budget information presented to us and to ask questions, so...
And the dialogue in the Budget Committees and those notes is really good. So if you, if you have time to, to read those, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, we're gonna move on to items for consideration at our business meeting, 5.01 Budget Amendments, and we'll keep Kelly at the podium.
Let me do it.
Get our laptops over where we'll be.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're doing that, and everybody's getting all switched over here, I wanted to just make a general comment. I went out to the All-County Band Concert on Saturday, and I just tell you, I was so enthused and so amazed. Rob, I seen you out there. And the music that those kids could make, I thought I was somewhere in New York or something. I was so proud of our musicians and the leaders. And, and if you didn't go, all I can say is, is you missed something. So I just wanted to pass that on and congratulate all of those that participated and all of those that helped, because it was a wonderful event.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. I appreciate you bringing that up and mentioning that.
Also, along the same lines, the robotics competition at JM Robinson this weekend was also spectacular with easily 200 or 300 kids and family and companies sponsoring those efforts there. And you could tell in their faces that they were just excited about their projects and what they were doing and what they were accomplishing at, at various age levels. They, they were just really, really enthused about the work they had done and their chance to shine. So again, another great event.
Yeah, that was pretty phenomenal. Okay, we'll go start with our Budget Amendments.
So we'll start with our, the, the first item is the Digital Learning Grant, and Dr. Probst wrote that grant for the system. The first installment was the $115,000 that you see that I'm having to reclass because DPI didn't like, decided they wanted to change the code on it. And the second line item is the second installment of the grant that we received, $250,000, $2,000. So total grant of $367,000. And desperately needed those dollars. And if you, so I, I recognize a lot of that into the, the digital learning for the textbooks, so we can replace a lot of those things. We're not getting textbooks, we have digital learning. So we certainly need those dollars to help out there. Then we're, our normal reimbursement for substitutes, increase of $18,000. Teacher orientation, that's just a normal allotment that we get. That's for when the teachers come early in August and state gives it to us in March. And then we have exceptional children's special state reserve funds that we've requested specifically. So increase in our state fund of $367,000. And then the next budget amendment is for the 1% pay increase by Cabarrus County for all of our employees. And you'll see that budget amendment there. And that's all I have for you today.
Just one quick question on this, and this $700, and what is it, $740,000? So that's the total amount that we got from the county for the salary increases for the employees. And, and they're listed here, and then, of course, the program code number on the far left indicates what department those monies were directed to. And I assume the higher one here, is that for teachers, administrators, that type thing? And just curious, which the, the O2, O2, the smallest one on there, just curious what that position pipe might have been?
Glad you brought that up. Administration is O2.
Okay.
Okay, any questions on the, on the Budget Amendment? All right, Mr.... Hold on, since we've got multiple questions, we're gonna start with Rob, and we'll go from there.
I'm gonna pass.
Carolyn, you have any comment? Nope.
Ms. Klutz, on the, on the local fund, we see that they, the county gave us a $740,000 worth of increase. Now, this will go into the continuation budget next year, but it won't be going in as a $740,000. How much is it going to go in as two times that or some portion?
$1.946, I believe.
$1.946. So the...
Yeah, give or take, something like that.
$1946 was a good year.
Yeah, it was a good year.
All right, so we will see that new budget would be $58,611, and that would increase by $1.946?
Well, take, yeah, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Mr. Sheehan, any further comment? Mr. Harrison?
And as I recall, there was a discussion that these salary increase, or these, the local fund increase was up to, but not including beyond, the $70,000 a year income range. Is that accurate?
That's correct. That's what the funding is for.
And the, so the, all of these are the total amount under $70,000 a year.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, you have any comment on Budget Ma... Okay, Kelly, I guess that is it. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We will move on to 5.02. We'll ask Dr. Louder to come up.
Mr. Chairman, also, I wanted to mention, too, that these items are for consideration for the March 10.
Yes.
And I'll just, we need to make sure, I'm sure it's consent, but we need to make sure...
Give me a nod of the head on consent? Yep, okay, consent. Thank you. See, it's always nice to have a former chairman sitting right there that can direct me and keep me straight. So, Dr. Louder, if you want to go get started with our policies and policy revisions on first reading.